Ready? I'll call the meeting of the McKinney County zoning board of appeals to order. Today, we'll be discussing application number 2023-032. The applicant is Ally Energy Solutions LLC. And the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. This is on, uh, the address is at 23017 Illinois Route 173, Harvard, Illinois. It's part of PIN number 0604-20005 and 0603-10014. The property consists of approximately 26.3 acres and is located on the south side of Illinois Route 173, approximately 900 feet west of the intersection of Illinois Route 173 and Flatiron Road in Dunham Township. I'd like to have the members of the zoning board introduce themselves in the name of the township in which they reside, starting on my left, Mr. Cozen.
Robert Cozen, Elgakuitt Township.
Charlie Eldridge, Richmond Township.
I'm Lenia Coustra in Alden Township.
Vicki Gardner, Nunda Township.
Kurt Schnabel, Riley Township.
Thomas Jurges, Coral Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The public publisher certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated June 30th, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was July 29, 2023. The affidavit of mailing was signed and the date mailed was June 28, 2023. The survey has been checked against the petition, the legal notice, and the publication in the newspaper, and all three match. The filing fees have been paid. The endangered species consultation has been received. And the McKinney County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. This would be NRI number L230594519. For those that maybe are here, that are not the petitioner, that want to understand how the hearing works, we have the petitioner give their testimony, and then they're asked questions by members of the board. And then anybody from the public that has a question of their testimony can do so. After that, then we'll hear the staff report from staff, and the boards can ask questions of them. And then at the end of all that, then if there's any public comment people want to give, then they can come up to the microphone over here. And if you are going to be speaking, you'll have to give your name and the address before you speak. And also, anyone that's interested in speaking today, I'd like you to raise your right hand and I'll swear you in. So anybody, whether you're petitioner, whether you're a member of the public, anybody that's going to be speaking today, do you soundly affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Okay. I will go ahead and turn it over to you, sir, petitioner, if you would introduce yourself and your company, and then just go ahead with your testimony.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Norgard. I'm the vice president of solar energy for Ally Energy Solutions. We are the EPC contractor for this project at IFSI.
Will you make sure your microphone is on, please? There's a little button, push it towards the mic.
Yeah, I turned it on.
Oh, okay, maybe you just need to have it closer to you. Oh, yeah.
That's great. Should I start over?
No, you, you just go ahead and keep going.
Uh, so we are the, we're working with IFSI, and we are the EPC contractor. So this is a turnkey project that we would provide them. It's a 764 kilowatt solar array DC, which means the energy will be converted from DC to AC through the inverters. And the ultimate amount of energy produced will be 625 AC alternating current. We chose that size because that is the approximate amount of energy that they consume in one year, and we're trying to offset 100% of their usage. That is the best return on investment for them, and works well within the Illinois, with the ComEd interconnection policies, as well as the Illinois Shines incentive program for solar energy. I'm not sure what other topics you'd like me to address. We're happy to answer questions.
Okay, well, just say, you know, to put it on the record that normally we have you go through the conditions for conditional use permit. But we have been informed by the state's attorney's office now that we cannot put that in the staff report or consider those at a hearing because we only need to consider for citing the state requirements. So I will just open it up for questioning then.
Thank, thank you. The applicant is listed as Ally Energy Solutions, but the AIMA is Illinois Foundation Seeds. Is that something you can address, or should we hold that question?
Yeah, so we're Ally Energy Solutions. So we will be the builder, the contractor, the designer of the project. IFSI, Illinois Foundation Seeds, is the owner of the facility. So we applied on their behalf.
I'll reserve my other questions for staff. Thank you.
Mr. Eldridge.
I have no questions at this time.
I understand that because of the size of this project that you're, um, you need to follow the guidelines of the state for commercial facilities, is that correct?
That's what I understand, and I think this is the first project in the county of this size that this applies to.
Okay. Because of that, does, does that mean that you need to come up with your five points in order to be approved for this site? Or is this just because it's a private contract, private company, you just do it?
That's what I understand. It's, it's a behind-the-meter project. It's not developed for multiple end-users to subscribe. This is behind their meter, so the goal is to generate power, have them use it before it gets to the grid. Now, every now and then, they will over-generate because maybe on a Sunday, their processes are really low because they're not working, and they're still generating power because it's, sun, sunlight's out. So at that point, it will go to the grid, and they'll get credit for it to be applied to a, um, their electricity bill for the next month, the next billing cycle.
Okay. And your goal is to offset 100% annually of their usage?
Correct. That is the best ROI for the customer.
So we've learned a lot about solar facilities in the last few years.
Yes.
This is a little different because it isn't going to the grid per se. So how, how is this transferred from the panels to the, well, your client? I would, I would say that's your client.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's very similar to what you're used to, but, so the panels collect the energy. This is a ground-mounted system, by the way. It collects the energy in, in direct current, and then is converted to AC, which is usable by the facility through, um, equipment called inverters. And there's five inverters on the project. Then they are combined, that energy is combined, and routed to the transformer.
This much we know.
Okay. So that's pretty much what we know.
Okay. So, I mean, they basically plug something in, and it's coming right from this, this particular set of arrays?
Absolutely.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Different.
It's called behind the meter because the goal is to use the power before it gets sent back through the meter to the, to the grid. Whereas the sizes and projects I think you're more familiar with, there is no meter. They just send it to businesses and homes.
Right.
And it's, and they're much bigger. We size this only to be used by the facility.
So are these, are these tilting panels?
They're fixed, yes, they're tilted at 20 degrees, I believe, and they're fixed tilt, so they stay still.
Okay.
So there'll be no movement. Fewer moving parts is good for the operation and maintenance, less things that can break down.
Okay.
It's more, it's not as efficient of a collection of energy, but it's also less O&M for the owner to, to worry about because he's running his business, not running his solar.
Right. So is there going to be maintenance on this site at all? Or is this, now that you, you are doing this, you build it, everything is up and running, the electricity is going right to their plant or whatever, and so now you're done with it, and it's up to them to maintain this?
In some cases, yes. But in this case, our, our contracting partner is Altoff Industries, and they will be monitoring it and providing, uh, ongoing O&M.
Okay.
And we can monitor this 24 hours a day, seven days a week through the internet. We will know if it's achieving the expected results of the production by getting alarms and getting emails from the system.
Okay. Is there any type of storage of electricity, such as batteries and nothing like that?
Not in this case, no.
So it's just, you know, make it?
Make it and use it, or make it and send it to the grid.
Okay, right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister petitioner.
Yes, Ms. Gardner got a good head start on what I wanted to go with you gentlemen.
Okay.
My first question is, you are the energy company, you're the project manager, you're also the designer. Are you the installation team? If not, who is?
Vincent Coldrey is our project manager. And as I mentioned, Altoff Industry will be our installer for this project.
There's another gentleman with a logo on his shirt.
He's the boss.
He's the boss.
He is the operations manager for this site, IFSI site.
Okay. So you've got a private customer here that's doing this. You have a contract with them. Is this type of contract where once it's installed, you're fully paid? Or is there some kind of a lease arrangement?
It is a contract contingent on, number one, this permit. And then that would result in approval for the Illinois Shines incentive program. So if we don't get either one of those, the contract would be canceled. That's number one, so we're hopeful we'll have a contract. Once we fulfill our obligation of building this and commissioning it, then it gets turned over to them. We get paid in full. And then they will choose an O&M company, which most likely will be Altoff.
Would this be considered like a normal construction project, say for a home, where you are paid in progress payments throughout?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. We, we, there's certain milestone payments that are important. Down payment is one. And then approval from ComEd and the Illinois Shines program is the next big milestone. And then, once we start procuring equipment, that'll be another bill. And then commissioning, and commissioning will be the last one.
Okay. My last question, at least for now, is, how is this arrangement with Altoff set up to operate right now? Obviously, there's nothing to maintain out there right now. Are they going to be assisting you somehow with final connections of various equipment that the customer has on site now?
Altoff is our subcontractor. Vincent will oversee Altoff, that subcontract, and they will be doing the work and the installation.
Altoff will be doing the actual gray installation. I know Altoff is a pretty big operation. You have, I'm sure, a lot of your own specialized equipment to do something like that, so I am not questioning that at all. I'm just curious, a little more detail on how the maintenance arrangement would work. Would you have a service agreement signed for the first year, a customer multi-year agreement? Or you just?
It's usually an annual agreement that is revisited on an annual basis, based on a lot of factors. A lot of times, the agreement is in place, and Altoff will do courtesy visits just to make sure things are going well. But as I said, we can monitor this remotely and understand if it's meeting the expected performance, then Altoff really doesn't have a lot of things to do. But every now and then, they'll, they'll be in the area working for, hopefully, other solar projects for us. And while they're in the area, they usually do courtesy stop bys, just to make sure everything's running well and looking good.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
It works, okay. I see on, on your survey, you had 26.289 acres. How many acres are actually going to be underneath solar panels?
So.
Again, identify yourself, please.
My name is Vincent Coldrey, project manager for Ally Energy Solutions. This array itself is going to occupy about one acre at that time, but 70% of it is currently on untillable soil anyway. There used to be a trailer area there for onsite housing of workers.
So on that screen, everything in blue is solar panels, am I right?
Yes.
Yes, it's more than an acre.
Not much, no.
Your whole site is 26 acres. It looks like you got a quarter of it.
Dimensions.
Like a fourth of, yeah, there. Okay, now go back to the color one. All those blue horizontal lines are solar panels, am I right?
Yes, sir, you are correct.
And you're telling me that's only one acre?
I'm going to do so. So on the map, blown up like that, we transfer those from one system to the other system. Those systems do not exactly line up on the same scale. So if you look at it through a helioscope, it's a much smaller area. That is a CAD file for drafting purposes, and those two systems don't scale the same. So that is the closest that I could get that example to set on the map for you, for you to see it, sir. So he's, we've actually got the dimensions right here. It's about 444 feet wide by, like, 244 feet. So it's 244 feet wide by 444 feet long.
Two acres.
Yeah. Roughly, it's an acre, acre and a half is what we were projecting.
Yeah, I was going to compliment you for only doing 25% of the property. But you're, now I'm behind the curve. God bless you.
I, yeah, I, the, the goal ultimately is the area that you see it is grass. Used to be an area where they had trailer parks. It's already untillable because there's foundations in there.
Yeah, and it just handed me this, and it's in these little blue dots.
Yes, sir.
And it's like two acres.
Yes, sir, just over two acres.
And there's no curb cuts off Route 173, or using existing driveways? You got a setback of, looks like 500 or more feet from the road.
Uh, it's about 320.
320 feet from the road, okay. And it's full of industrial buildings already?
Correct.
If I was sitting any closer to you, I'd pat you on the back. That's all my questions.
Okay. You, you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, you received something from the stormwater, probably, at a time of permitting. It might be that you have to comply with stormwater, so you're aware of that.
Just became, yes. We're hoping it wasn't part of this discussion. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. No, it'll be a, a time of building permit, not, not for this hearing here today. So I have a question for you regarding this, the Sunshine program with the state. So if, if you're behind the meter, so you're actually, you're not putting it on ComEd's grid. You're keeping it electricity off ComEd's grid. Why would you even need to go through approval with ComEd? I don't understand.
Because we're connecting to their grid. Because on day, at night, when they need to process, because they, during harvest season, they're going to be running almost 24/7. And at night, they're not going to generate anything from solar array. So they're going to have to pull electricity, reliable electricity from the grid. So you have to adhere to the ComEd interconnection rules. Because they are still required, even though there's an array on site, to provide 100% reliable electricity at all times. So they still pay for the demand that has to be held back by ComEd that they use. So they have to hold that in reserve for them, and they charge them for that, as well as the transmission lines to get that power when it's needed to the site. Now, our project is trying to offset as much of the transmission fees by not having to use the ComEd wires. But we always have to have ComEd in their back pocket for 100% efficient, reliable electricity.
So I see on here, there's a small transformer on the southern portion by the arrays, and then there's a new customer transformer that's right up by the buildings, and that's where it'll connect to their electrical system.
Absolutely.
And so then the poles then going out to ComEd will be the same poles and everything that has come from the road to that building?
They have just installed two new utility poles for the upgrade, for an upgrade project, too. So we will be connecting to that transformer, correct?
Okay. Ms. Eldridge, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something. Your relationship with Altoff for maintenance, once the project is in operation. My understanding, and please tell me if I'm correct or incorrect, is that you will be contracting with the owner of the property, and Altoff will be a subcontract.
Absolutely.
So it will not be a direct contract with, from the property owner to, to Altoff. It'll be through you on an ongoing basis.
For the, for the construction portion, yes.
Well.
Ongoing O&M will be between Altoff and the owner.
So that will be, so you will not be supervising that on an ongoing basis after it's in operation?
We will be supervising, supervising the performance of the array because we have made guarantees of a 20-year production. So we supervise it on, for that reason. But Altoff will be directly responsible for the operation and maintenance of it.
And if the owner becomes dissatisfied with Altoff for whatever reason, do they have the right to replace Altoff if they wish?
Absolutely.
That is not your decision, that's the owner's decision.
We would probably be getting a call from the owner, saying, who else would you recommend for an O&M?
But it is ultimately up to the owner of the property?
Yes. That, that agreement is between the ownership and Altoff.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Cozen, you have another question?
Presumably, before this was initiated, there was a balance analysis that was done on the consumption rate of the company.
The consumption of electricity?
Yes.
Yes.
And did you find that batteries would not augment that production requirement?
Batteries do have a, would have a potential role in this, except for the, the incentives and the federal tax incentives that they're, that make solar such an attractive financial play, do not apply to battery storage. And right now, batteries are not commercially developed like solar panels and solar arrays are. So they're very, very, very expensive for what you get out of them.
More expensive than the second and third shift consumption rates that ComEd would impose on you?
Yes, because, yeah, because in Illinois, it's a direct, um, charge, direct billing, flat rate, thank you. It's a flat rate. So it doesn't vary during the day. For example, we do projects in California. In the morning, the cost of power is, say, 16 cents a kilowatt hour, which is high for here. In the afternoon, it could be up to 40 cents a kilowatt hour. So a battery is perfect in California because of the expensive power in the afternoon. You can run off battery when it's really expensive and not have to buy from the grid. And then in the morning, following morning, you're recharging the battery of solar. That works great. In, in Illinois, with the flat rate, batteries just don't have a good financial play.
When you return power to the grid because it is not being consumed, what is the payment rate that ComEd gives you, or is there a penalty upon it?
No penalty. The setup is called net metering. So when it goes out to the grid, the meter tracks how much is going there, and they take that and credit it to the next month's billing cycle if at some point the site needed to draw from the grid. So they'll say, okay, last month, you made, you, you sent 100 units to the, to the grid, and the following month, maybe they had to draw 50 units. So those 50 units are free. The 100 units would be applied to that month's used bill.
But looking at a 20-year relationship in a commercial facility, what could reasonably presume that electrical usage by IFS will become more and more efficient? Would you therefore be dismantling the panels? Or would you continue to pursue more and more distribution to ComEd?
Over a 20-year period, the panels would degrade, and they degrade at about a half a percent a year. So you're basically generating a little less each year. So if they do become more efficient, they won't be overproducing by as much as in the first year as they will in the 20th year.
So it's not likely that we see IFS become its standalone community solar?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, Ms. Gardner, go ahead. Just one question for, oh. Just one question to clarify something I thought that you said. Did I hear you say that they have to pay ComEd even though they're producing their own electricity?
Yeah, because they want ComEd as a backup in case the solar array goes down, in case it's cloudy, in case they're covered by snow for whatever.
Somehow that doesn't seem fair, but let's not talk about that. Let's move on to, and this might actually be for your client. If it gets to the point where you're not producing enough electricity for your needs, are there plans to expand? Are there plans to change the whole way of generating electricity?
Excuse me, Matt Heedner with IFSI, Twin Gardens. I, I think we're streamlining where we are right now. So with this, the 20-year goal of point, whatever it is, point five, we should be, by the way, we're streamlining our production, we should still fall in that where we don't have to worry about as much of not having enough. And that, like, Laurie Lamorey said on this, we need ComEd to be there. We have too much money in the fields, the, the sun don't come up, or there's too much seed out there that needs to be dried. So we don't have that flexibility of waiting a day.
And it's Illinois, the sun doesn't always come up.
Yes, ma'am. So.
If, you know, something in the future, let's say in the next five, 10 years, whatever, changes, and you do need more electricity being produced, do you have room for expansion? Do you have plans for expansion? I mean, you've got a big piece of property, you're not using a whole lot of it for?
We do, is that something Vincent wants to talk about?
Yes, I think it's probably.
Yeah, these arrays are expandable. As I mentioned, there's five inverters that convert the DC to AC. You can put more inverters on there and put more panels.
And there's room for more panels?
Yeah, there's more land room. And even going farther north towards the road, which is obviously untillable, would be the preferred choice. Yeah, our whole goal here was to use as little farmland as possible, and we don't need it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions by any member of the public? Want to come up or down? Let me introduce yourself. And pull that little lever towards the microphone.
Yeah, it should already?
I'm sure people.
It's already on?
Oh, it is on. Okay, great.
All right, this way.
Yeah, okay. Patricia Kennedy, 20712 Stipe Road, Harvard. And I'm representing Dunham Township. I do have some questions, yes. One would be, since we're talking about maybe two acres, not quite two acres, why are you requesting a conditional use for 26.3?
The parcel is, is split in two parcels.
Yes.
And we didn't know if, at the end of the day, where that final transformer was going to be put in, that it might just go into the other parcel and then have this land use permit be rejected because we didn't get both parcels analyzed. So it was so close to the edge, we didn't want to risk not doing it correctly the first time. So we did the whole entire survey, which, and the flight of survey hasn't been done at this facility since, I think, 1988. So it was due for an update anyway, so we just did it all.
Right. Always a good thing to do. However, as per the little drawing that this gentleman has, the array, as I understand it, is basically way up there, and you have all of this? This is just bare land?
It's farmland that they use for the project.
Yes, exactly. Why do you want, I, I, our township was, could not understand why you would be requesting a, a conditional use permit? a conditional use permit for the entire 26 acres. It was confusing for us.
Okay, I didn't know how to request something based on just a partial plat of survey. Did I go about doing that incorrectly?
Go ahead, Ken, if you can answer that question.
Yeah, so when we get applications in where the use is just on a portion of it, the applicant has the option to have a survey or create a new survey with new boundaries on just a portion of the property. We've had many people lately, especially with the solar farms, submit even up to 160 acres when the solar farm is just on a small portion of it. They're tied to the site plan, so as long as what's on the site plan is accurate to what they're proposing, it doesn't really make a difference, other than it makes their application costs a little bit higher doing more acreage.
And the tax.
But they're still limited to what is shown on their site plan.
All right, thank you very much. An item that, let's see, oh, what is going to be done as far as maintenance of the vegetation under the panels? I understand from, from what I read that you're talking about low-height peregrines, that sort of thing, but what kind of maintenance do you propose to maintain that? Since I can be kind of pesky.
Yeah, right now it's grass.
Yeah.
I'd say grass, using that term loosely.
Weather's not gravel.
Yeah. I'm having a hard time answering that because it's so close to where you guys are growing crops and testing crops, that I don't know what type of weed control is appropriate, and I'm not going to guess at that.
Okay, I asked because it was laid out in the proposal, and so I was wondering if there's going to be support for that or not. Oh, would it be correct to say that part of the reason that you have the agreement with ComEd is because if you're selling to ComEd as well as buying from them, you have to have that agreement, they have to do the inspection on site so that they're sure that their people don't get fried?
Hundred percent. They, we, this whole project stops if ComEd did not approve of the interconnection plan we put to them. That is step one before we can even get to this place.
All right, very good. I think that's all for right now. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any other questions by members of the public?
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Mr. Kozin.
I have to admit, this is a rather interesting configuration, much more dynamic than what I see on the rooftops of Algonquin Township. My question is, given the complexity and the efficiency of the, of the business, one exploration was, was it possible to have a dual power system in place in which the solar would only provide without connection to the ComEd? So you would have a dual feed, an OCR beam day equals running around with propane and gasoline, and in that way diminish ComEd's expense, so to speak?
No, that was never considered because ComEd is the first hurdle to overcome because you have to do a safe interconnection. Was just mentioned, if they're going to come out and work on it, it has to be a safe environment. It can't be, if the, the grid is down, you can't have live solar working. When people are working on the grid, you'd be two doors down. So it has to shut down, and it all has to be approved by ComEd's engineering staff. Otherwise, nothing happens.
Thank you for your comments, thank you.
Ms. Kennedy, do you have another question?
If I could, please.
Okay.
I didn't make good enough notes. Again, Pat Kennedy, Township. The other question was, that came up during your questioning earlier, is what is the rate that ComEd will be paying for the energy that they receive?
The same as...
How much for, how much per kilowatt?
It's, it's, it's flat. So if we, if the site overproduces, it goes to the grid.
Right.
And they credit, when, when the, when the site requires electricity from the grid, it's just credited back and forth, one for one.
So in effect, in effect, they are going to be paying the, the owner the same amount the owner is going to be paying them?
Correct.
That's really changed a lot.
Excellent.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on then to report from staff.
Okay, just a couple of things I did want to note because this is a kind of a unique situation compared to the other solar farms that we've seen. You may notice on the site plan that there is no fencing proposed. The National Electric Code does not require fencing for a system of this size, so they are not proposing fencing around the facility at this time. You'll also notice on the site plan, there is a note for waiver of the requirement for the vegetative buffer along the north side of the array. They are set back about 320 feet, I believe, from the right-of-way. Normally, we would require a vegetative buffer there. They've asked for a waiver due to the location of the, of the property being almost 2,000 feet from any residences. There is some vegetation, some trees in the front there that, staff did not have any issue with them requesting that waiver as part of the conditional use permit. I did also want to note, I noticed on the site plan, it says we're at 176, it is on 173, so we'll make sure that we, we modify that because this will be the official site plan.
Was that us or you?
That was me.
Other than that, this is a very agricultural area, as I mentioned, we, here we go, so the residential use there to the east, that is about, I measure about 1,700 feet from where the array is actually going to be located. There's no adjacent neighbors really that would be affected. The future land use designation for this property is retail, is surrounded on three sides by, by the city jurisdiction there. Staff does not have any, any concerns with, with this. I feel it meets all of the state requirements.
Is that vegetative screening variance a state requirement, or is that a county requirement?
It's a county requirement.
So is that something the state would say, we can't do anyhow?
No, they said with vegetative screening, we had, we have the authority to make any conditions or take them out, so that is okay for us to take that out.
Okay, but given that it's a farm field, a large farm field across the road, then it's really not possible. And that, and it's like a natural buffer to the west?
Yes.
Along the property line?
Yes.
Anybody else have questions for Kim?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Kozin.
Thank you. Will there need to be a reference to those waivers in Condition 5? Because Condition 5 articulates a detailed landscaping plan, compliance with the board, landscape screening. Can we have that discussion when you read the conditions, right?
Yeah, there really...
Just trying to understand.
There really isn't going to be a requirement for the buffers since there's up from that on the other side, so as long as you are all okay with the, that waiver of that, there really will not be any vegetative buffer to review. Obviously, if they do decide to do pollinators or something like that, they can show that when they apply for the building permit, and we would take a look at that. But that's kind of the standard language of the condition, but it'd be open to different languages if it's more clear on this specific site.
Right, right, so no, we look at the file for the approved landscape plan?
No, because the, the official site plan does show that it's a requested variance from that screen.
And, and one more, kind of a deep dive into zoning as opposed to electricity, what would be the principal use of the property, given we have both the solar farm and the existing?
I mean, this is accessory to the, to the business. You can have multiple principal uses, but I, I am...
Thank you. I took your time, thank you.
Yeah, good point. Anyone else have a question? Okay, so Kim, basically you're saying that number five, we can delete, or the lens?
Figure out if that's unnecessary to be... Yeah, I think that probably can come out because there isn't going to be any required landscaping around the site.
Right, at this time then, anyone from the public that would like to make a statement can do so. What, would you like to? Again, please state your name and the address, and then you have three minutes.
Patricia Kennedy, 20712, Stipe Road, rural Harvard, and we need more company out here. The one item that wasn't brought up was a concern about reflection for aircraft. Daisy Airport is just 2,000 to 3,000 feet away, and so any aircraft either approaching or departing, I know it's talks about, you know, scaling back the, the reflection for the additional treatment, but talking with pilots that fly all over the country, this kind of thing is indeed no problem, so it's something I hope that might be addressed.
I can try my best. These, the typical solar panels now are called anti-glare.
Yes.
And I, I mean, I've noticed when I fly, most airports nowadays do have solar fields on their property. So it is something that was addressed, I think, early on through the evolution of the design of the solar panels, the glare has become something that is a problem, and now it's, I don't, I don't anticipate it being a problem for pilots. But I'm not going to speak for them, but...
Could you possibly, could I get from you, or these good folks receive from you the studies and the work that was done that actually shows the numbers on that, please?
Of the anti-glare technology?
Yes, correct.
I can do, do some research.
Very good, thank you.
How would I get that to you?
Oh, right here, to Kim would be good.
Okay.
She's perfect. She'll get it to everyone else. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, do you have a closing statement?
Well, thank you for your time and your questions. I think this is an important project for a private company who's trying to reduce their energy spend in order to help their business grow and become, and basically hedge against the increasing cost of electricity, and allow them to better anticipate their budget and also come, become a little more self-reliant. The goal, I think, is to grow their business through energy efficiency savings programs so that they can reinvest in their business and maybe, I'm not going to speak for them, either hire more people or add more process equipment to generate more revenue. So we're happy to be part of this. It's, it's part of like our new society of be, trying to be as green as possible, and the state of Illinois has been very proactive in advancing solar technology, and we're happy to be a part of it. So thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to close the hearing portion of this petition and move on to the voting portion. We have some conditions for consideration offered by staff, I'll go through those. Number one, the conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4 of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, site development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan prepared by Ally Energy Solutions and submitted to the Department of Planning and Development on June 26, 2023. Number three, the decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as in whole. If any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months, that portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County stormwater management permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drainage tile shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, all requirements of McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance 16.56.030.PP, as amended, subject to State of Illinois Public Act 102-1123, shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. And number six, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Are there any other proposed conditions?
Chairman, I am moved, adoption of the conditions as...
I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge and seconded by Ms. Gardner to approve these conditions. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote, Mr. Eldridge.
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kozin?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so that is six to zero for conditions? Oh, yes. I'm so sorry. You're entitled to seven votes, and we only have six people here, and you need a five, five people approving this to go to the county board with an approval by the ZBA. So I have to ask you permission. Would you want to wait for a seventh vote, or are you happy for us to vote today?
I'd be happy for you to vote today.
Okay, I'm so sorry for that.
No problem.
Okay, so now we will move on to...
I move with adoption of the petition, subject to the conditions.
All right, and I'll second. So it's been moved by Mr. Eldridge and seconded by Ms. Gardner, that we approve this petition. Discussion, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes, I'd like to preface my comments with a reinforcement of what Ms. Kennedy said. Daisy Airport is unusual in the, a very substantial portion of its business are antique aircraft and the remaining business are very small private planes, so planes taking off and landing are going lower and slower than at virtually any other airport in Illinois, and I think that that enhances the concern about glare, so I just request that that be taken into consideration. Having said that, I think that it is clearly in the interest of the public that businesses use solar generation whenever it makes economic sense. It reduces greenhouse gases, it's good for the environment of the county. It is the county's policy to encourage these in appropriate locations. The state law has been changed, so our ability to regulate and impose conditions is much more limited than it was previously, but the basic principle remains that in appropriate locations, and I think this is one, it is public policy to support solar generation. And for all of these reasons, I shall support this petition.
Mr. Kozin?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I do recognize that the submission of the documents all fulfilled the condition. I also come to recognize that another thriving agricultural business in McHenry County, this one involving sweet corn, will continue to stay in McHenry County, and more so, since I've taken, what I recognize, much time delving into deep, may I shortchange some of the research that has been agreed to be undertaken? That the FAA issued a policy that there is no potential for ocular impact on May 26, 2021, and their Chicago office in Elk Grove Village would likely accommodate a site visit to give the confirmation and address the concerns of nearby air pilots. I thank you and will support the petition.
Ms. Gardner? Thank you. I, I am impressed by...
That was, that was impressive.
Yes, yes, Mr. Kozin is known for Googling as we're... I, I agree with what's been said. This is a different type of project. I see no downside here. I think that this is maybe a forerunner for more companies to be doing this kind of thing, and I, I think it's innovative in that way, and I'm in favor of it. of thing, and I, I think it's innovative in that way, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Schnabel?
I agree with everything that's been said, and I will support the petition.
Thank you.
Mr. Jurz?
I'll agree with all that.
And I agree with my colleagues as well, I support the petition, the same facts that they were given. So I will call for the vote, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so this goes to the coming board with a six to zero vote approving. At this time, our hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now we're off the record. Let me comment that a nearby business.
You're going to shut us off, right, Ian?
Nearby business colored some of its panels in a fashion so that.